All right, recording has started.
Terrific. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wyndham Planning Board to order. It's Thursday, October 8th, 2020 at 7:35, I guess, PM on Zoom. We're still meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded. And I am going to ask for help with the attendees because.
I'm sorry, Anne, we just lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there we go.
I can only see your face. So my understanding is on the, the members of the board who are in attendance are myself and Weeks. I'm the chairman, Virginia Rogers, who is the vice chairman, Peter Clay, Daniel Pascarello, and David Anderson. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I cannot see the members of the public who are sitting.
Are you, are you on gallery view?
I was, and then when you put your screen up, that disappeared and all I have is your screen, so.
You should have the option of clicking on, do you see anyone's picture? Do you see my picture?
I see your picture, but no one else is.
Above that, there should be an option for you to click on gallery view and you can get more of the members.
All right.
Then just expand that screen if you need to.
Terrific. So I can see that we have members of the public in attendance. Catherine is recording the meeting, taking minutes. And we have the applicants for the first and second public hearing in the room. So when we get to them, we will ask them to identify themselves. This first public hearing is a continued public hearing on a definitive subdivision on 60 Arbor Street, to which I am in a butter, as is Mr. Pascarello. So I will need to turn the chairmanship of the meeting over to Ms. Rogers for this portion of the meeting. Thanks. I'll put myself on mute until I'm called.
Thank you, Anne. And we are continuing a hearing on the application for a subdivision at 60 Arbor Street that was continued from the September meeting. And there has been a good deal of information passing back and forth about at what state, state we are in with this application. And I would just like to remind the members that at the, at the last hearing, at the, when we continued the hearing in September, there were some questions about the plan that was presented, particularly with regards to frontage and to the lot size. So those two items on the street layout are the only two items that we are talking about tonight. The petitioner has asked that we give advice as to a new plan that is, that contains simply the land and the, of the street. And the, it has the dimensions in there of the lot size and of the the frontage for the two lots involved. So those are the two items that we will be talking about tonight. And we will give some, we will have some discussion about the, about this and about those particulars. But since we have no further plans and the, and the position of the minor street into the subdivision has been modified. So we will simply look at those two items and offer some advice upon, about whether they meet the conditions of the subdivision regulation. And, and then we will ask for any questions that the other two, other two members of the planning board might have about the plan. And we will also entertain some questions or comments from a butters. And the hearing will be continued once that advice has been given to.
Virginia, this is Dan. I just want to officially recuse myself before you continue.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I think, Margaret, at this point, you're going to put up the, the latest plan. As I said, this is, we are only considering now the layout of the street and the lot divisions. There is nothing more to the plan that we are considering tonight.
Virginia, if I could.
Yes.
On September 18th, we received an email with a letter from the applicant's engineer, Jim Deculus, and had, it had several questions in it. A copy of that letter is up on the screen. So he has asked for some information from the board as to whether the plan that was, not that one, this one. One of the plans was from September 17th, which, I mean, September 18th. Let me just find that plan, Virginia. So, Mr. Deculus, you're asking for clarification from the board on whether the September 3rd, yeah, I'm sorry, whether the September 3rd plan showed adequate frontage in lot area. And the board of, that's the 72. I'm sorry, I can't find that plan right now. I had it up earlier and it's gone. So I guess the question is whether that plan that was presented at the last meeting was appropriate as far as frontage and lot area went. And that was what the board wanted to discuss first tonight. And I'm going to find that in my folder. Just going to stop sharing my screen for a minute. And if you, if you just bear with me for one minute. There it is.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. This is Jim Deculus. Margaret, if you need help with that, I can, it'd be great.
Yeah, do you have that, that plan?
Yeah, that we considered.
I don't know where it went on my screen. I have to go between my work email, I mean, my work computer and my home computer. And I try to email myself everything from the work computer. And for some reason, that one did not come forward.
Yeah, if you'd like, Margaret, I'd be glad to share my screen and share, share that plan with you.
Give you that ability. Okay, so I'm, I'll make you co-host temporarily. So you should be able to share that, that, that plan right now if you could.
Okay, can everyone see that?
I can see it.
Great. So as Margaret mentioned, this was the plan that was presented at the last hearing. And there were questions as to whether there was adequate frontage for Lot 6 and also questions whether there was adequate area for Lot 5. In a letter that I wrote to the planning board that Margaret just brought up, the, I addressed the issue of whether or not the wetlands that are in that on Lot 5 should be factored into the area calculation for Lot 5 due to ambiguities in the language and the zoning bylaws. So what we've done is we've presented an alternative plan. This was the last plan. Hard copies were sent yesterday by Federal Express. Ms. Roger, Madam Chairwoman, you should have a copy of this, hopefully, the hard copy.
Jim, excuse me, the plan that you're showing on the screen is not the one we got yesterday, correct?
Well, the one you got yesterday, I just minimized it, is, whoops, sorry. This one right here is what you.
We should move from this one as quickly as possible because we are not discussing this plan tonight.
This is what I've asked for you to, to discuss, Madam Chairwoman.
Virginia, this is the first plan that he wanted clarification on as far as.
It is not, it is not the current plan that we are discussing tonight.
No, no, Virginia, it's the first plan that we need to discuss tonight is the one from September 3rd. That was the question they had originally as to whether this plan did show adequate frontage or lot area. And I think the board, well, through discussion with council and peer reviewer, it was determined that that, this plan did not show the frontage or lot area that was required under subdivision control.
Okay, so, so again, the date on this is September 3rd. This was the plan that was last discussed at the September 10th Planning Board hearing. That's what we're looking at right now. And then the second plan, which I've asked for the board to consider for tonight, is this plan here, which there was, there was.
It's not changing, Jim, on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not changing.
It looks like I am not sharing my screen, just one.
Yeah, I do have that other one that you sent today.
Okay, Margaret, I'm just going to stop. Could, do you mind sharing, do you mind sharing with me again, Margaret? Well, actually, I can share since you've given me that, right?
You know what, let me, I can pull up that, that plan that I have, Jim, hold on. Oops. All right. Do you want me to share the one I have?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, hold on, here it comes. And this one is. Okay, hold on, that's not, it's. That we got today.
Yep.
Then I just move my screen over a little bit. Okay. There we go. All right, this is the plan.
Yeah, this is the plan we are looking for clarification on this evening. Now, what we have done, despite the ambiguity on the definition of whether wetlands area or floodplain should be factored into lot calculations, we've nonetheless added that necessary area to Lot 5 to overcome that. So we have Lot 5 with 43,150 square feet and we have frontage of 187. Margaret, do you mind zooming in on that? The, for Lot 5, we have that frontage entirely along Arbor Street. It's 187.78 feet. And then we have a new cul-de-sac based on the minor street provisions under the rules and regulations. The cul-de-sac itself is 120-foot diameter. Within that, we have a 100-foot diameter pavement. Again, because it's a minor street, we have only a 40-foot wide neck going into the cul-de-sac. And we have a 16-foot wide paved surface going into that paved cul-de-sac. We're left with a lot on the lower left. A Lot 7 we're designating, that is not a buildable lot. It just basically has no purpose. But was necessary for us to create the adequate frontage and areas of the lands. The frontage of Lot 6, as you can see on top of the cul-de-sac, is 175 feet. That runs nearly the entire half perimeter circumference of the cul-de-sac. So again, what we're looking for clarification on is whether or not this layout satisfies the boards and the zoning bylaw and the rules and regulations are requirements for creating a new lot and whether it, whether there's adequate area and frontage for the two lots. Thank you.
I would like to ask Peter and David, the other members of the board present, if they have any questions about this.
Virginia, Steve, I have a question.
Sure.
Jim, on the left, the the left side here, it doesn't identify the radius of the cutback, which the subdivision bylaws or rules and regulations require to be a radius of not less than 40 feet. I see the part on the right does reflect 40-degree, 40-foot radius, but it doesn't look like the one on the left is 40 feet. Is that correct?
No, it's not, David. Are you referring to the radius that coincides with, or butts Lot 7?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a detail for that. Margaret, if you zoom to the left, you'll see the detail. And you can see the 40-foot radius there for an arc length of 6.25 feet.
Got it.
So we've satisfied the, all the requirements for layout. And this particular layout will not require any waivers. We are seeking a determination from the board tonight as to whether or not you want us to pave this, as shown, this 100 feet of pavement. And we're also seeking a determination as to whether you want sidewalks. We don't think either of those two additions of significant amounts of impervious area are responsible. But if that's what you want us to do, we're prepared to do it.
I had a couple more questions. So just to confirm, the smaller portion of Lot 6 and a smaller portion of Lot 5 are included in the calculations for the Lot 5 and Lot 6 respectively. Is that right?
No. There are notes on the, a little up further on the left, Margaret, that explain that the area of the smaller portion of Lot 5 is included with Lot 5, but the smaller portion of Lot 6 is not included with Lot 6. If you read those two notes there, you'll see why. If you think we're interpreting that bylaw requirement incorrectly, we'd be glad to discuss that.
I actually, I, I actually thought that, well, I don't understand. I thought Lot 6 actually didn't, was included because the line, the, the lot line on the turnaround and the lot line on the Congdon Richardson lot was less than 150 feet total. And therefore, it wasn't, you wouldn't include the 50 feet on the straight line, but maybe I misunderstood it. But either way, if you're excluding it, then that's fine.
It's a very difficult provision to, to interpret, David, no question.
I, I read it many times and I'm still swimming through the fog. The, the 43,150, that includes the wetlands, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, any questions you have?
Not at this time.
Now, I would like to ask if there are any butters who have any questions or comments that they would like to introduce at this point.
I'm sorry, Virginia. I, just a question about Lot 6.
Is this Peter?
Yes, Peter, sorry. And are there any isolated freshwater wetlands in Lot 6?
No.
No, this is all contiguous upland, as I understand it.
Yes.
So the contiguous, the contiguous upland in Lot 5 would be the 43,150 minus the 3,141. So it's going to be 40,009 square feet.
43.
So when we, when we had the opportunity to go inspect this area, gosh, I don't know how long it was, go it was, but.
It was July, Peter.
Wow. I, I could have sworn there was standing water in, like, in the sort of upper, left-hand corner of Lot 6. Was I, was I dreaming about that?
I, I can't speak for you, Peter, but there was no standing water.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, turning to.
Actually, sorry, Virginia, I had another question. Sorry about this. Is the plan that the existing driveway would still be used? I assume that there, that the access from Lot 5 to the road is not contemplated. Is that right?
That's correct. We're going to maintain that driveway for the existing dwelling.
Okay. And what's, what's the approximate distance, if you know, between the left edge of the driveway of the existing dwelling and the edge of the proposed minor road?
I don't know, but there was, there is some language in the bylaws that talks about the intersection of the center line to a driveway cut being a minimum of 65 feet. We exceed that.
So from the center point of the road to the center point of the driveway is more than 65 feet?
No, from the center of the intersection of the new way with the existing Arbor Street, which is shown on the plan. We actually have a center line intersection shown there. A little further down, Margaret? Like right above the R4, yeah, right there. So from that point to the edge of the driveway opening is about 70 feet, 71 feet right now to the existing driveway.
Got it.
Hi, this is Charles, 70 Arbor Street.
If you could wait one minute. Congdon. So Jim, when you said that was 65 feet, is that going straight across this way?
No, a direct, a direct measurement. Yes, in that direction, Margaret.
I would have to get some clarification on that as to whether it needs to be like this or this. Would you, would you say that driveway is about here or is it more here?
Yeah, it's right about where your hand is now, more like.
Right there?
Yeah.
And do you know how far it is from there to there? That's a question they picked from off.
I'm sorry, I can measure it. I can measure it, Margaret. And okay, what do you, what do you, distance are you worried about?
So you're saying the distance should be from here?
Yes.
And then you're just measuring it from there to there?
In that approximate, yeah, in that approximate orientation, yes.
Not measured along the roadway?
No.
Okay.
No, because the, the bylaws says central line, it says the intersection of the center lines from what I remember.
All right, we'll, that would be clarified if, you know, and when you were to submit new plans, we'd probably see that driveway. Thank you.
Now, did we have someone waiting in the audience?
Yes, this is Charles, 70 Arbor Street. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, just a couple of questions, not of clarity, I guess, for the planning board more than anybody. I remember attending one of the first meetings on this several, I guess it was years ago. And the whole issue of frontage on circular, on circles and everything was discussed. And at the time, it was declared that, you know, you cannot use the circumference of the circle, you have to measure on the court of a circle. And yet clearly, in this plan, at least, it appears that the circumference of the circle is being used. So I just was quite unclear as to what that ruling is at this point, since I had heard something totally different in the, in a previous planning board meeting.
It could have been some years ago because there have, we have changed some of these zoning regulations about that. And that was one of the, the big changes that we made in a practical way, whether we were ever actually using the appropriate definition previously is, is not, I'm not certain about that. But yes, if there, it is, would be measured along the circumference of a curved portion of the roadway.
Okay. And then the other, other question is, I know there's a utility pole at the end where this driveway is planning to come out into the street. I'm just wondering if there's a plan for where that's going to be moved.
You know, I think that that would, that would come up when we see more of the plans. We don't, we don't see any, anything on this except just the lot lines and the, and the and the frontage.
Okay.
So the, so though, obviously, there's, there's other questions. And this issue of the 40-foot radius on both sides of the entrance, I think, might be called into question whether that is, that meets the conditions. But we don't make the decisions about that, that you didn't know the peer reviewer or people concerning, concerning with the construction of the driveway might raise that issue further along.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Weeks, Ms. Weeks.
Hi, Mrs. Hopman, I mean, Ms., sorry.
Whatever.
Day, Mrs. Rogers. I submitted to Margaret this afternoon, or this evening, really right before this meeting, a letter from my husband and I. But because the letter that Mr. Deculus references a very preliminary, preliminary approval at 51 Cherry with my name on it and does so in a misleading way, I felt that it was really important to lay out the distinctions between what the board approved as a preliminary matter at 51 Cherry Street and what is being proposed at 60 Arbor. So I'm submitting this now. I, I want to be very cautious not to violate open meeting law requirements, so I haven't submitted it earlier. So with the board's agreement, I can either go through it or you read it at your leisure if you're not going to vote tonight. But our position is, is that these applicants simply do not have the acreage or frontage to develop the project they want. We've been at this for four full years. We've seen a bunch of different permutations. The claim tonight that they don't need any waivers is belied by the fact that they are noting that they don't know if we want them to build sidewalks. Well, if we don't, then there's got to be waivers. But in any event, the property just doesn't contain enough acreage to permit a hammerhead lot or a joint driveway. And so we have this bizarre plan that was just put up on the screen. Ms. Hopman, I don't know if you would go to the second page, please, since I'm going through the. And I just wanted to make the point that the town does not have a long-range plan right now. We have zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and those are, and those regulations like the earth removal rules, the building permit requirements, our CONCOM review and the peer review that is done in our town, those are the closest thing we have to a long-range town plan for Wyndham. Together, they constitute a statement of what the town wants its development projects to look like and be. And, and so. And so complying with them, which is the planning board's charge, is really an act not, that isn't, you know, supposed to be nitpicky, but it is supposed to promote the town's character. With that, I also want to turn to my point about the 51 Cherry Street project. That was a preliminary plan, and it does not provide any precedent for approving 60 Arbor for at least three, probably more reasons. First, it was preliminary, and it was brought to us so that we could comment and make suggestions on it. And those comments and suggestions, like the peer review that this new plan still needs to go through, included cautions and requests to further scope several issues the board and the abutters had raised with the preliminary plan. As a result of that applicant's follow-through, what was finally approved doesn't look anything particularly like the preliminary plan. It is only one additional lot. It needs all of the zoning requirements for a hammerhead and a shared drive. Unlike 60 Arbor, it contains sufficient frontage and acreage. There was only one issue that we had remaining, which was the location of an old shed, and we conditioned our approval on the the applicant's agreement to make sure that that is dealt with. I want to also note that there is no ambiguity in the zoning bylaw about what is supposed to happen with wetland area and where it's present, floodplain. The text could not be clearer, and I'm an attorney who spends I've spent the last 30 years of my life interpreting statutes. What it means is, if you have both of those things on your property, you have to make sure that the area of both of those things is excluded. Where you only have one, you only exclude one. Ergo, here, where there is no floodplain, the language means what it says. You exclude only the wetland area. Certainly, it doesn't mean you don't exclude either one. So I just want to make sure that the record is clear that the regulation is not ambiguous. It's very straightforward. It's a standard use of an and/or construct. And then I guess I'll just finish by saying, we have gone through this now. This is four years of taking up the town's time, including resources to litigate a previous denial. And we still have the same piece of property that is not adequate to do what the applicant wants. Think in a situation like that, you need to vote it down. It's time to say enough. So anyway, that is what I wanted to give to the board. I wanted to make it quite clear that the 51 Cherry Street project was quite different. The process was quite different. It complied in all respects to the process we like to use, where you come in with a preliminary plan, you get it. And they got a special permit. You take the peer review, you take the comments from the board, and you come back with something that satisfies the neighbors, satisfies the town's zoning ordinances. And that, you know, everyone is in agreement that that's the best way to move forward. It reflects what we want from the town of Wyndham. This plan doesn't. And so I would submit this letter to the record. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, may I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. First off, I would.
For one, I would like to say about one thing. And that is that the job of the planning board is laid out so that it considers each application according to the the conditions of that. And that there is no use of precedent in comparing one lot to another, or what has happened on one lot to another, simply because they are never exactly alike. So that I would ask you, please, to refrain from commenting upon anything that we did at some other site. It has no bearing on this situation whatsoever. The decision will be made only on the merits of what we are seeing in front of us. So if you could spare us that, those comparisons, then yes, you may respond.
I never have alleged that there was any precedent to rely on with the preliminary approval of 51 Cherry Street. My only point in referencing that project was that there was an approval. And you, Madam Chairwoman, did sign it, and you did see frontage like what we had originally proposed. That was the only point I was trying to address. More importantly, as to acreage and frontage, I'd like to know, well, I guess most importantly is, I think it would be courteous, and we would appreciate if any letters that come at the planning board at the 11th hour like this, we have a chance to review. Because, you know, I'm looking at two-thirds of a page, I don't know what page number it is. We don't have any context here in which this letter was presented to the board. So first off, we'd like to, we appreciate being considerate enough to get this to us before a meeting, a hearing like this. Second point is, if Ms. Weeks and her husband are going to argue that there's no adequate acreage or frontage, it would be appreciated if you could have a technical reason for why that isn't so. Because we have gone through this multiple times, and this plan shows entirely adequate acreage and frontage for the subdivision we're contemplating. The last point I'd like to make is that if there's been any burden and hardship for this project, it's been on the Hamiltons. Jeff has been a resident of the town for most of his life, and he's a well-respected resident in town. He doesn't deserve the treatment that he's gotten, nor does Susan.
I think it's.
Hamiltons, not so much, not, you know, we recognize that the town has gone through a lot with this, but we also would respect their position on this as well. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, may I respond?
Sure.
I'll be very brief. It's burdensome on everyone when an applicant comes in with multiple plans that don't meet the zoning ordinance. The applicant knows very well that I could not have submitted this letter to the board or to the staff without violating the open meeting law prior to this time. And as the court, as the, sorry, I'm still in my argument. As the board is not voting tonight, you have plenty of time to take this. The town has plenty of time to take your plan to the peer reviewer, which is the process that the town uses, and figure it out. So I just think that there's sort of hollow arguments, if you don't want my personal opinion. What this applicant really wants to build is not the plan in front of you. They want to build a joint driveway, and they don't meet the requirements. The plan at 51 Cherry did.
Who said that we want to build a joint driveway, Ms. Weeks?
I'm just going off the multiple previous plans.
That's not what's before the board this evening.
I'm sorry, would you mind allowing me to finish my sentence? What exists now in front of the house is a sea of pavement. It's impossible, in my view, for you to be able to build what's here and not use that street to access the Lot 5. You'd have to pull up the entire front yard of Lot 5 to be able to do that. So it just doesn't, it just boggles my mind that, you know, the existing conditions are not shown here on this plan. Because if they were, you would see direct overlap between the new street and the pavement that already exists on the property. It's misleading. And I'm just going to stop now, because if you guys are not voting tonight, there's no point in belaboring this further. It should all go to the peer reviewer.
Thank you for that, for both of you. And yes, the next step is to go to the peer reviewer. And it appears that provided that the the street is built in this pavement, and there is no waiver that is expected or anticipated that a driveway be built through the center of it, which would not be appropriate, would not be considered, then just from a lot area and frontage perspective, that this appears to meet the requirements of the zoning law. We all agree that it is quite unusual in appearance, and that to have a cul-de-sac that abuts a neighbor, that there are a lot of things about it that are not going to look the way we hoped, we would hope that a a new development would look. That being said, that we think that that is all in the hands of the peer reviewer and of the plans that we will see eventually. So we can say that it does seem to meet the requirements of the lot size and frontage, and that this does not constitute any approval whatsoever of the definitive subdivision, that that would be the next step that provided that the, there is new money provided for the peer reviewer, and that a full set of plans is submitted to the peer reviewer well in advance of the next meeting, so that there will be time for review, and then we will consider all those other issues at that point in time.
So. Madam Chairwoman, may I just clarify some issues here? When you say "well in advance," what do you mean? What's the date?
I think I'm going to ask Margaret to comment upon that, because the next hearing is November 12.
Yeah.
I'm going to read from here, Margaret, okay? In order to be prepared for that meeting, we will need to receive the peer review funds by October 15. All documents and plans by Thursday, October 22, for a full review of the project. And if you cannot meet those deadlines, we can continue until our December 10 meeting date. But we are done with the last-minute changes and with information that is not given to the peer reviewer in time.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, I have a few more questions.
Yes.
First, I guess, is a comment. As you know, my consulting firm came on board in April, taking over work that my dad has been undergoing for the last four or five years on this project. Our first submission to the planning board was for a hammerhead upon Margaret and Michael Clark's suggestions. It was a much less.
Excuse me, please. There was a considerable misunderstanding of what a hammerhead lot is, simply because you put in a turnaround that looked like a hammerhead. That is not the meaning of a hammerhead lot. There are specific requirements for a hammerhead lot, which involve a much larger area than you are dealing with. So it isn't correct to say that you put in a hammerhead lot. You put in an application for a lot where you took your your frontage from a cul-de-sac and then requested a waiver not to use that frontage, but to use a hammerhead turnaround on a dead-end street.
That's not correct. Look, I'm not going to get into the details here.
I think that perhaps, unless it pertains to the schedule in front of us, that we need to stop the discussion.
All right, but I need to clarify these future issues here. The first of which is, in the Rules and Regulations, at Section 4.1.6.6, it says that turnarounds and minor dead ends shall have a right-of-way diameter of not less than 120 feet, which is what we've done. And when paving is required, an outside diameter of not less than 100 feet. My question to the board this evening is, are you going to require 100-foot diameter pavement like we are showing here on this plan?
We certainly will require that there is 100 foot at the edge of the pavement. Whether or not there can be an island in the center, it's something that would be discussed with the peer reviewer and at their recommendation.
So the answer from the board is that you will require paving?
We will require paving for this street, yes.
Okay.
So there's no way to get around that, sorry, and still have the frontage.
All right, but you are willing to consider a landscaped island in the middle?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Second question is pertaining to sidewalks, Section 4.1.4.
We aren't going to talk about sidewalks today.
Madam Chairwoman, you've asked for a full set of plans for the peer reviewer to submit. We need to understand what we're going to submit for peer review. Section 4.1.4.3 talks about sidewalks, and it says, "they shall be provided when, in the opinion of the board, they are warranted." My question to the board this evening is, does the planning board believe that sidewalks are warranted for this project?
We don't know the answer to that, and we will know if you, you can ask for a waiver if you think they are not, and the peer reviewer will help us decide.
That's not the way this, it says, "if, in the opinion of the board," Madam Chairwoman. It doesn't say, you know, we need a waiver for that.
Well, you do need a waiver, and the opinion of the board would be to grant that waiver.
Okay, that's not how I read that section. Can we have a discussion and vote from the planning board on this? Rather than your.
I think we're not ready to discuss, vote on anything tonight. In fact, we're not voting on anything tonight. We were asked for our recommendations, or whether you met the lot size, lot area, and frontage requirements. And the answer to that is, as far as we can tell, yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to.
Everything else, we will read from your plans.
Excuse me?
And everything else, we will read from your plans when they are submitted.
Okay, so the board wants us to proceed with this because there is adequate frontage and area, so we'll.
We wanted you to proceed with it. We said that we believe that there is.
Okay.
And that there may also be an issue, we would like to point out that there may also be an issue with the the entry into this circle. And that is with the radius, that does not appear to be a 40-foot radius on either side.
Can we talk about that?
I can't tell you anything more technical than that, than that it is not there and will probably be questioned.
All right, what specifically is being questioned on that? I guess, you know, I'm trying to understand so we don't continue to waste time and create a burden on everyone here, so.
Well, if you just did what the laws, what the regulations recommend, then we wouldn't be having this discussion. There needs to be a 40-foot radius for the entire length of the turn-in.
And it says that in the regulations?
Excuse me, Virginia, if I could just, if I could just show something to the board. So Jim, when you show on your plan, the you say there's a 40-foot radius, but the 40-foot radius is just for the first 15 feet. So from what we understand, a radius should be from where the first point that it touches Arbor Street and into where the curve ends. So what you're showing on here seems to appear that you go from a 40-foot radius to a 10-foot radius, where right here, it's tighter than the 40-foot would be. I think that's a question that the board has seen, and that I think peer review would be able to clarify that.
Okay.
That was where the question came up, as to where you're showing. But that was where the question came up, as to where, where you're showing for 19 feet 30, 19.30, you've got a radius of 10 feet, rather than 40 feet at the entire length of the radius.
Okay.
That's where the question may come up.
All right, well, section 4.1.3.5 says that property lines at street intersections should not be rounded or cut back to provide for a radius of not less than 40 feet. It doesn't say it has to continue to some particular point. That's what we've done.
Yeah, and I, again, I think that's something that the board would wanna have their own engineer as the peer reviewer discuss with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you.
Virginia, may I make a comment before?
Sure.
What I wanna say is that I, I am newer to this matter. When I went out in July, coming on to the, and I understood the requirements of lot size and frontage, and get, came to learn it, there was something, when I went out to the property, I, I had a feeling that there wasn't enough land. And, you know, I raised my thought last time, and we got this new plan that shows, despite my skepticism, appears, as Virginia said, that it may meet the lot size and frontage requirements, may. And so, in spite of my skepticism, I say, okay, you know, there's a plan before us that may meet those two factors, and I credit you, Jim, for coming up with a design. I think the issue of the radius on the road is an open one, notwithstanding what you have said and what Margaret said. But, that being said, I, I would just say, I continue to have an open mind here, because my, because you put forth a plan that does appear to meet the lot area and frontage And so, I would just like it to go to peer review so that we can have a more fulsome discussion and consideration beyond this latest iteration of the C2 form, and we can really think more about, you know, what is the radius, existing conditions, these types of things, and really look at what is beyond the issues of frontage and lot size, which this September 18th plan shows more of, and really is designed to address, right? To have a more fulsome exploration of, of, okay, what does this really now look like? So, or I should say 10-7, or whatever the date is on, whatever's on the screen. So, I just wanna add that, Jim, and, and provide my perspective on where I'm at.
No, I appreciate that, David, and, and, you know, like I said, I am new to this as well. I just got involved in this in April. I thought we had a great kickstart with Margaret and Michael, taking their advice and getting started, and we've presented plans up to this point that have been upon their recommendation. They've both been a pleasure to work with. It's just frustrating for, for me and for the Hamiltons to take the advice of Margaret and Michael and Chris, and to come before the board and say, "Well, I've never seen this before, this just doesn't comply." I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can to work in good faith with the board, and I'm, I'm new to this, I'm getting frustrated, and, and it's, it's disappointing to, to hear roadblocks continuing to be thrown up, but we're gonna do the best we can here to get this done. And, again, my, my biggest disappointment is that we're in a Zone 2 aquifer here. It's very discouraging for me. I practice environmental engineering. It's very discouraging to see the amount of impervious surface area that we have to put down to comply with your requirements. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Virginia, if I could just, I, I'd just like to respond to Jim's comments. We did begin working with Jim, Mike Clark and myself, and we discussed with him the idea of the possibility of a, a turnaround rather than a full cul-de-sac. But throughout all of our discussions, we explained to him that he had to show us frontage on the way that was being created, and we were never able to do that. We were never able to show adequate frontage on what looked like a turnaround that did not include the cul-de-sac. And those were the obstacles that we couldn't get past because of our paper streets provision in the zoning bylaw. But throughout all of this, we were not able to show that, Jim, and I think we all tried to see if it was possible, but it just never seemed to be possible. So, I don't, I don't especially like the idea that we may have had something that, you know, we're trying to get something to the board that was not, would not be approved. We all along said, "The most important piece of this is that you need to show the frontage on the way that's gonna be created." And I think that was just something that could never happen.
And I thought that the first set of plans that we submitted at the end of June, Margaret, achieved that.
They, in fact, did not. They didn't even have the frontage on the road that you intended to build.
Hey, folks, this is Peter Clay.
Yes.
I kinda second David's idea that we should really get this in, to some form of peer review, and, Jim, we did give you some guidance on the couple of questions you had, and so let's, let's, let's move forward as opposed to rehashing how we got to where we are, please.
Thank you. So, that being said, would you like us to send you the schedule for a November 12th hearing, or if, if that seems to be more difficult, we can continue this until December?
November 12th would be great, Madam Chairwoman. And, you know, the other question I have is just regarding the peer review fees. We asked for the consultant to stop reviewing once we, after the last hearing, because it just wasn't making sense for us, for him, for them to continue to review, so we'd like to know, we'd like to get an invoice or at least a summary of charges before we provide more money.
I have a question with you about that.
There, there are no funds left in the peer review account. It was, the, the, peer reviewer has utilized, I think it was, there were, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, but there are no funds left in that account, so they had stopped their peer review anyway. So, we, they've asked for $1,500 at this point, to continue the review.
Okay, and you need that by when?
October 15th.
Yeah, October 15th, please.
Okay. Okay, we'll make sure you get that. And I look forward to discussing these more complete plans based on this layout at the, the next hearing on the 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The hearing is now continued until November 12th, and I will return-
I'm sorry, Virginia, if you could just ask for a vote to continue to-
I wasn't gonna ask for a vote at all about anything, so yes.
Just on continuing.
Peter, David, would one of you like to move that we continue the hearing until the certain November 12th?
I'll move to continue the hearing to a date certain on November 12th.
A second? Oh, we-
Second?
Oh, thank you. So, we will, Peter, your vote is on the motion?
Is aye.
David?
Aye.
Virginia? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess the gavel comes back over to me. We have a second public hearing on the agenda tonight related to a driveway construction project at 41 and 43 Grapevine Road. Margaret, do you wanna read the legal notice into the record, or shall I, or how would you like to proceed?
I can do it. The planning-
Or Mike. I'm turning over the microphone.
The planning board of the town of Wenham, Massachusetts, will hold a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, and the Town of Wenham's zoning bylaws, Section 5.2.6, residential driveways, maximum distance, and Section 13.4, special permits, on Thursday, October 8th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, at Town Hall, 138 Main Street, Wenham, Massachusetts. This will be a virtual Zoom meeting. Instructions for logging on will be posted on the meeting agenda on the town's website 48 hours prior to the meeting. This hearing will be on the petition of Jay Coughlin of 41 Grapevine Road for a special permit to allow access to 41 Grapevine Road via a driveway through 43 Grapevine Road in excess of 500 feet at 41 and 43 Grapevine Road, map 30 lots 18 and 15. Plans could be reviewed at the town's website or at the planning coordinator's office during regular business hours, and be weeks chairperson Wenham Planning Board, published in the Chronicle and Transcript, Thursday, September 24th, and Thursday, October 1st, 2020.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Is there a presentation of some kind with mapping and so forth? I understand that this is a, an application for a special permit, so I'm presuming there's some visuals.
Tom, do we have anything to show?
There, there is, yeah. I, yeah, I'm trying to send these between two, two computers, and I think I'm losing something somewhere. I'm gonna try to pull that up right now.
That's great, 'cause I'm really not prepared to do that. As I said, I was on a hearing until right before this.
Here, here it is. Here is their application, and this is their plan, and I'm gonna see if I can change that view to rotate that way. There we go. I think you could, can you all see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Let me move it. There we go.
Just a clarification question. Have we looked at this before?
It, it was sent to you via email.
No, but, I mean, like, a couple meetings ago?
No, no, I don't think we have.
Okay.
You know, Peter, I may have given you the plans a couple of meetings ago for this meet, for this hearing.
Is this over by Penguin Hall?
Correct.
Okay, so we, it's on the other side of the street?
No.
No, this is, I mean, if you come down from the DPW garage, heading towards, I guess, Larch Row, it's on the, we're on the right. Does that make sense?
You know, the Notre Dame School is, and there's like a little-
Yeah, yep.
And then the, you'll see the two pillars where the driveway is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, because these plans are kind of hard to read, would you like to point out what we're looking at? It looks like the house is on the right-hand side of the plan and the existing drive.
Correct. We have our existing house on the right-hand side, and then, when we built the house, we put Grapevine, I guess you could call it Grapevine Way, which is a shared drive, and that comes in, and it's, it was made so that at the top, we have the fire truck access and a fire hydrant up at the top. I think that, well, it is noted up there, fire hydrant, and that is gonna remain. The couple that owned the 43 Grapevine had, came to us when they decided to sell, we were friendly with them, and we bought the property just because we wanted the privacy. We wanted to keep the privacy we had and ultimately have our own private drive as opposed to sharing the other road, which hasn't been an inconvenience, but we had the opportunity, so we did it, and that other road will stay intact, and we've gone before Concom and got approval from them, and due to the, the length, we were just in front of, in front of you for your approval.
Need a special permit? Thank you.
Special permit, so, yep.
Margaret, you, your note mentions too that this was going out to Jeff Baxter for comments?
Yeah. And he, he got back to me this evening, via text, actually, that as long as the other roadway is not being abandoned, and Jay, you're gonna keep that access still?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Then he doesn't have any problem with it. He, he, you know, his concern is if they were to block that off and have a hard time getting up there and access to that fire hydrant.
If anything, we, we've created another access point, to be honest with you, so-
So, although the plan here shows the driveway kinda ending in space, but really, whoops, but really implies this, the existing drive extends all the way to Grapevine Way and will continue to do so?
Correct.
Yep, there's a, there's the bike code, the fire truck, call it access, at, at that point.
Right. It's not clear from looking at the plan. I, I wonder if there's someone who could edit the plan, just so it's clear that what we're approving does connect up with Grapevine Way.
We, Tom, do we have that?
Yeah, we actually submitted a copy of the plan that was done previously for the approval on Grapevine Way that showed the turnaround. It was done, I wanna say, what was it, three years ago, Jay?
Yeah, it was three years ago, and that was done by Meridian.
Yeah, so we-
Could just, I mean, if I had a pencil, I would just draw the line.
Right, no, I know, I know what you mean.
I know, I, I, I'm with you.
It's there, it is, and it's not going anywhere either. It's staying.
I'm sure that's true, and I don't have any reason to add the word. It's just that, when we have to sign off on a plan, we like to see it done, so, anyway, that's just a suggestion from me.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can bring up the map showing where this is on the property, if you wanna see that. Let me just pull it up. So, you have a sense of, this is the, can you see the map?
Yep.
Yep, so this is the Coughlin's home, correct? And this is Grapevine Way.
Correct.
That's correct, and you can see-
And this is where the old house was.
You can see, and, Tom, you said that they, that you did send the, the plan?
Yeah, the Meridian plan, I attached a copy.
Did you send it to me, Tom?
I did, yes. Yeah, I had it scanned and I sent it to you.
Okay. I can find that?
I, I also attached one hard copy to the plans I dropped off. I didn't make copies, you know, numerous copies, just one of the hard copy for the record.
Okay.
Approved plan by Meridian. But you can see on, on the map that you have up here now that, you know, that turnaround is in effect, those are the existing stone walls and the-
This is where it comes in.
The plan is to maintain that accessway and not dig it up and plant it, so-
Just gonna keep it intact, yep.
That shouldn't be difficult for you guys to connect those lines to show on the final thing that we're gonna sign off on.
Sure, absolutely.
We can do that.
No problem.
Do any of the other board members have comments or thoughts about this? Turn it over to you.
Yeah, just a, a couple questions. So, the house back here, that, that's being built now, isn't it?
No, it was built three years ago.
Three years ago it was built.
So, what the hell, there is a house being built back right, right next to you on that turn?
No. No.
No.
Peter, you may be seeing the, you have an excavator there and machines that are moving some of the, the, you know, the materials for the driveway around. They had gotten started a little bit, but then conservation stepped in. This house is down, correct?
Correct.
Well, we've got our demo permit.
Yeah.
Then, so the house is down, there's one machine still there, but, you know, once Concom had come in and said, "Listen, we need to take this a little further," we stopped everything, got their approval, so maybe that's what you're- So maybe that's what you're seeing.
Well, there's a dirt road that goes right through where that house used to be.
That's right.
That's right.
And what's happening with that?
It connects to our driveway now. So that's why, it would have been clear if the picture was clearer, like Ms. Weeks was talking about. She was right. Then you would see that that road comes in and connects into our current driveway. We have to keep that Grapevine Way. That's the, our neighbor's driveway, too. It's a shared driveway. There's no way it can go anywhere. Do you know what I mean? So plus, we have that access for the fire department there as well.
Okay.
You know, it's really, it was more for Jay and I and our family to have more privacy. You know, there is two of us sharing that driveway. It can be awkward at times. So it was more about a simple privacy thing. So it.
So that's what you see, Peter, that the dirt is this here on the screen. That's what you're seeing.
Okay, so I'm just doing Google's map. There's something called Lacy Circle?
I think that's what Google named it.
We think that's what Google may have named it.
But it's Grapevine Way.
Corrected to Grapevine Way.
All right, got it. That's why I was so confused.
Sorry.
I see the same thing, Peter.
That's come up before. Sorry about that.
No sweat. My oldest son's claim to fame is that he actually got himself in a Google image of himself when you put the little street guy down, down in Philadelphia. Not a lot of people could have claimed that.
All right, moving along.
Ian, I had a couple of questions as well. This is Dan.
Excellent. Dan, go ahead.
Can you go back to the map for a second, Margaret? So this, I'm assuming you own this lot 16 as well? Is that correct?
What is, is that what's?
Yes. Yeah, there's a parcel in between 41 and 43 Grapevine.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And with respect to Grapevine Way, was that put in, is that a subdivision road? Or is it, when, when and how was that put in?
It's, it was always there. And we bought the land. And what we've done, what we got approved to do was to bring the fire hydrant up to the top and create the turnaround due to the distance where the house was in accordance with the town regulations. So that's what we did. And then that's about all I can tell you about what.
Paved it, too.
We paved it, and we had to have it a certain width. And then we have the stone barrier, stone, call it retentions on the side per the fire department's request. So that's what we did as well.
Okay, so this was, that was three years ago for Grapevine Way?
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is it, I'm assuming it's a private street? Is that right?
It is. Yep. It's, we, I plow it and we maintain it. So, yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for members of the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is all a single lot now? And are there any, are there any possibilities of any new buildings being put on any of that land?
Oh, that's why we bought it.
We wanted to look.
Quite frankly, we bought.
We bought it to get rid of that.
To have the privacy and.
Okay.
The Concom was, was great. We're going to have tons of squirrels and birds and deers running around, new trees. It's going to be a nice place, hopefully, when we get it done.
And the, the distance from Grapevine Way?
We have that, I believe, shown on our plan. The other.
So what's distance off a Grapevine Road or Grapevine Way?
From Grapevine Way. The difference between, between the two. Yeah. So is there a measurement on this, on the map?
It was that pre-existing distance that was already there.
So is this always been, was this their driveway?
Correct.
But no, you just went through their house?
Exactly.
Correct. There was an existing driveway about halfway up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
That's exactly right.
Ian, if I could just ask a question. Ms. Coughlin, when was Grapevine Way created?
Well, to be honest with you, when we bought the property, the 14 acres, the house is now.
Yep.
The dirt road, I guess, to put it that way.
Okay.
It was always shared.
It was always shared.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I couldn't find in my files a subdivision plan for Grapevine Way, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I just wasn't able to find it. It seems to me that this looks like something the planning board would have approved as a, maybe a two-lot subdivision. So I, again, I assume the plans are someplace. We just, I just couldn't find them in my file quickly, so.
Yeah, the only thing.
I don't know if you have them.
We purchased 41 Grapevine, you know, with that there. When we bought it from the estate, for the people who passed away, their daughter lived in the house to the left. So I think that's why they never really.
I see.
Know about.
Margaret, that's where I was going with my question as well. I'm assuming the frontage for 41 is on the circle for Grapevine Way?
Yeah, it must be.
So it, it's either, I'm just curious if it was an A and R or if it was a subdivision?
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm not, I'm not positive of that, which it was, Dan. It does look like it would have been a subdivision, though.
Because if it's a subdivision.
There's a, a street layout.
Yeah, if, if it's a subdivision road, I'm just guessing that it's probably wider than if it had been an A and R, which, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because the purpose for the special permit with respect to the, the length of the roadways so that the apparatus can get in and out. That, you know, you don't usually want dead ends longer than 500 feet. But, you know, if it's a subdivision road, it's probably better able to handle that.
And there was an existing house on, pretty much to the right of that, where you see that cul-de-sac. We took that house down and built ours further down where it is. So there was an existing house there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Grapevine Way existed.
Right.
It had to.
And they bought their house.
We bought our house. There was.
There was an existing house there.
Down and built our house.
And we just put our house more.
Whatever was there was there.
Was there.
And they were there for years, from what we understand.
Margaret, you should ask, this is where we need Don.
Don would have remembered. I should call, I need to call Don. He would have known all about it.
Who was the owner of the house to the other side of Grapevine Way?
McMillan's? Is it the McMillan's?
Okay.
And they were like in their 90s when they passed away, I believe?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Five or six years ago, I think.
Yep.
Yes.
You're right.
And her daughter, their daughter lived.
The daughter lived off to the left.
But, but the, but the, but the current owner of the house in front of that, on the other side of Grapevine Way?
I believe, if you're coming up on the left.
Yeah.
That, she's been there since, that woman's been there since we've, since we bought it. Yep.
So that's okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
You move your mouse up just a little more, up a little more. That was McMillan, Mr. McMillan's daughter. And he, he sold kind of concurrently when we bought.
So somebody.
Right. Yeah.
There's a new family there.
I just remember it came before the board because, because that's when Grapevine Way was really expanded and made into a, a street.
No, a street, okay.
Yeah. It had just been a little driveway up to her place.
Yep.
And they're not proposing any changes to Grapevine Way, you know? That subdivision wouldn't really be pertinent to this.
Are there, if the board members have no further questions, I'm wondering if there is anyone else from the public that wishes to speak about this? Spoken about the Butters, but I'm wondering if there are any Butters in the virtual room?
I will say this, that I think two houses, I guess, north of, what is this road called? Grapevine Way. I think that's the Erdmans. And I was pretty sure that Bill Erdman had checked in, and I think he got worn out by our previous discussion. So I couldn't understand why he was listening to the Arbor Street conversation. And then he dropped off, but I'm pretty sure he's two houses up with that pool in the back. But, so I think there was intent, but he couldn't cut it.
I think it's difficult, I will say, for the public to endure sometimes through to the items that they're most interested in. And I can totally understand his desire to get off. I don't, I do wish there was some way of getting people information about when exactly their items would come up, but I'm not certain that, I'm sure we don't have such a mechanism. So he's not here now.
Yep. Just, just for the record, Madam Chairman.
I'm sorry, Margaret, we don't have anything from him in an email or anything?
No, I have not received comments from anyone, any of the Butters on this project.
All right, then. Nothing from the board, nothing from, I would take, we just remind the board that when we consider a special permit, we are required to consider community needs, traffic flow and safety, parking and loading, adequacy of utilities and other public services, neighborhood character, impacts on the natural environment, which we've already seen a review from the Concom, right, Margaret? I think, did I hear they had approved this or agreed to it? And then potential fiscal and economic impact. I think much of the, many of these are really not applicable, with the exception probably of traffic flow and neighborhood character. I would just, I think at this point, having pointed out those items that we need to consider, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing unless there's some reason to keep it open, Margaret?
Can I ask one more question, Ian, before you close? What's the pave, the width of the paved road?
The new driveway?
Yeah, yeah. I know it's a 50-foot right-of-way, but I'm assuming you're not paving all of that.
50, I'm not following. What is, if we can zoom in, I think it's 18?
18 feet. Yeah, there's no right-of-way. That's just.
There isn't, okay. Got it.
Do you show that on the plan anywhere, Tom? Are you showing the, the width?
You have to zoom in.
I think you have to zoom in.
Hold on, let me look. No, you know, it was on the conservation plan, but it's not proposed.
The driveway, we have the length.
Yeah, just the length.
It was on the con, approved.
It was, yeah, it was 18 feet. This is the same plan we submitted, doesn't show the trees and proposed plantings, but it's the same plan for that, that we got approved with the determination of applicability through the Conservation Commission, and it's 18 feet wide.
I might recommend that we just include, you know, if the board does vote to approve this, and one of the conditions would be that they have to adhere to their conservation approval, of course. And the width and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. And with the revision to the plan to show the connection between the existing driveway and Grapevine Way?
Yep.
So first, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Weeks says aye.
Clay says aye.
Rogers?
Says aye.
Hascarell, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Right. Then we could go on to, to approve the plan with the conditions or.
Sorry, Ian, we can't hear you very well. If you could repeat that.
Very sorry. Somewhere along the line today, I lost my earphone for this, for this machine. So you'll have to, excuse me. I'm asking for a motion to approve the plan with the additions or changes that we have just suggested, including the condition that you meet the Concom requirements or approval, and that the existing drive, that the plan be revised so that the existing driveway or the prior, previous driveway is shown connecting fully with Grapevine Way.
Yep.
And with that, I think it meets all of the criteria that we are supposed to consider for a special permit. May I have a motion to that effect from someone on the board or with any changes you would prefer?
I, I move that we give this, what is this? What do we call this? I'm sorry, guys. Special permit?
Private driveway exceeding. The length escapes me right now.
500 feet.
100 feet.
Dan, why don't you just whip it out there for us if you want?
Is it, is this the only basis for the special permit? By the way, is it the length of the roadway?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion would be to approve the application for special permit for driveway in excess of 500 feet on condition that the revisions made to the plan as previously discussed, including the extension of the driveway to connect to Grapevine Way and the addition of the width of the paved, proposed new driveway be added?
And I, could I make a friendly amendment to that and say, and the recommendations of the Concom?
Right. And, and that the applicant adhere to all requirements of the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
Peter, Clay's seconds.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I could just, I would make one more suggestion that as a condition there, they do not abandon the use of Grapevine Way.
Absolutely.
So that fire trucks don't ever have a problem getting in and out.
Yep.
Fine, I will add that to the motion then.
Thank you.
Very good.
Previous is not be added. And, and can I suggest that it, it seems like it's easier to vote on these if you call us one by one and then we vote?
That, that's great. I'm happy to do that. I need a second. Did I have a second?
Peter, Clay's seconds.
Motion? Okay. All in favor? I will vote aye. Weeks says aye. Hascarell?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
All right. I think that is a wrap.
And I will draft that decision next week and send it out to the board members. And then once you see it and approve, you know, just make sure if you have any edits or anything, you send them to me. And then I will send it along to the applicant, and then I'll ask you to come in and sign it. Once, we have to wait until the board actually signs the document before I can send it to the town clerk to start the 20-day appeal period. So that typically takes us about a week or so, a week and a half.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Applicants for waiting all that time to present your case.
It's all right. Way it goes. Thank you for your help, though.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all back in gallery view now. Next item on the board is, on the board's agenda is the A and R for 50, the aforementioned 51 Cherry Street. Margaret, do you want to speak to that?
I do. 51 Cherry Street, as you know, was approved for an A and R. And I'm just going to pull it up. I mean, I'm sorry, for a hammerhead lot. and I'm just gonna pull it up, I mean, I'm sorry, for Hammerhead Lot, let me pull up the plan. Um, do, this is the plan. So as part of that process, the Hammerhead Lot, in order to create that, they have to have an A and R, um, that shows the division of the lot. This A and R fulfilled all the requirements that were necessary. It has in, um, it has notation on it that it was, is being created pursuant to the special permit for the Hammerhead Lot, which makes the frontage, um, and area, appropriate for, uh, for A and R approval. Um, so the only, they had given this to us quite a while ago. They submitted it when they first submitted their, um, special permit application, and I asked them to please take it back because as you know, A and Rs are supposed to be endorsed within 21 days of this constructive approval. They understood that was not the case for this, that they needed to wait for their, um, um, their special permit. So the permit's been issued, it's with the town clerk, it's within the 20-day appeal period now. It's, uh, the 20-day appeal period is up, I think, October 20th. So what I, I said to them was that the board could look at this and vote to endorse it if you see fit, and then you can come in and sign the My Law after, um, October 20th. And then they can have it recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
So, Margaret, what is the, I can't read the special permit, can you?
Say it again, Dan?
There's a reference to the special permit, can you just zoom in on that so we can see it?
Alan, where's my little hand? Uh, wolf. It says, "Plan purpose, um, with, to, to create a new buildable lot with reduced frontage on Cherry Street under 5221 of the Wenham zoning bylaw, refers to the Hammerhead provision," and then over here at the very bottom, this is, um, referencing the Plan, Planning Board's special permit, and then I'll fill in this date for the Hammerhead Lot special permit.
Um, is it, are they able to add anything to this, or is that gonna be too much of a process? I, I'm just curious-
Yeah, what do I have to add?
Just because we had the, um, the issue with the shed, and, and there was a specific condition in the special permit about that, so should that be referenced somewhere here?
Not sure that an A and R requires that. Um, because the, the lot line is already here.
Mm-hmm.
The shed is, is non-conforming. We certainly couldn't put a notation on here. The planning board can write on this. I, I often will write on an A and R. Typically, I'll write this, um, uh, the notation that it, we're not saying it conforms to zoning or anything. This, this, um, notation, I will typically write on, on it. I can write a notation on the My Law that says, um-
I, I think if it, if it just says-
You wanna give it to me?
Uh, if, if it just said something like the reference to the special permit and the conditions therein. You're muted, Ann.
Your note on the left does reference the special permit, so my question is gonna be, is that then-
Is it already there?
Yeah, I mean, of, yeah, it says, "Reference Planning Board's special permit dated," does that, that's not incorporating the special permit in this.
Right.
Because the other question that I had was, I recall that there was a joint driveway on this that was shown on the plan, but I don't see here. Is there a reason for that?
Yep, there, it is shown right here. Common driveway.
Oh, just this tiny little stub?
Yeah, because that really is all the, that is common driveway. That's the only area that was approved on the Planning Board's special permit also.
Okay, 'cause I was remembering the entire layout shown on the-
Yeah, they're just showing the section of, that section that is common to both of the lots.
Right.
I can, I can put a notation on it, Dan, if you wanna send me some language that you feel is appropriate.
Um, I, I, I mean, I think if it just says that, um, you know, this, the condition is that it incorporates by reference to special permit conditions.
Okay.
So, here's what I don't understand. I thought this was, this was a Hammerhead Lot, and that the area size of the second lot had to be, um, four acres? Or was I, am I wrong? In order to have the reduced frontage? So what am I missing with?
I don't think it's four.
Yeah, it, it's 120,000 square feet.
120, so that, oh, I see, so that's three acres?
And you're, you're muted again, Ann.
Okay.
My machine sometimes just mutes me, I don't know why. Poor machine has heard a lot today.
Yeah. Done.
Okay, so this is what it is. Uh, there it is, it's over 120,000. Sorry, okay.
Are there any other comments about this? I need a motion to approve it, do I?
Um, just to endorse it, because it's an approval not required.
Right.
So a, a motion to endorse the A and R plan with, uh, notations, um, added notations as mentioned.
Right, so I need a motion to endorse this with the added notation.
Still moved.
Second?
Back in.
Pascarello, can I take a vote? Leek says aye. Rogers?
Aye.
Pascarello?
Aye.
Clay? Have them mute? We have gone golfing.
Where did he go?
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Clay is not with us at the moment, do you just wanna wait for him, or, I mean, we have four-
I think four is enough, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's plenty.
Yeah, four is enough. Um, and also, I just, just so the board recalls, um, I'll call you in to sign this after the special permit appeal period is over.
Perfect. Alright. Being the case, we can move along. So, the next item was one we discussed last time about trying to have the, um, someone from the Water Department, uh, or Commissioner, one of the commissioners to come in and talk to us about how the water system works in Wenham, uh, what the restrictions are on it, um, how the summer went, uh, with respect to usage, and any considerations the Planning Board might want to, um, keep in mind in thinking about potential ordinance, uh, zoning bylaw changes on sustainability, as Margaret said. We, uh, may have the opportunity to be doing that. So, um, Margaret, do you wanna talk about, um, what you learned when you raised this with, uh, uh, with the staff? I, I can report that I mentioned it to Ernest Ashley, who's one of the commissioners, um, and he's quite interested in doing it, but not available this week, so.
Yep. Um, and it's pretty much the same situation with Eric Mansfield, who is the Director of the Water Department, uh, Water Department Superintendent. Um, Eric was unavailable this week, but he is interested in coming into the board's November meeting, um, to discuss water usage in Wenham and how it pertains to permitting and our, um, regulations. So what I think we, we would like to do is, if the board has any thoughts or questions or things that they're, um, would really like to know from the Water Department, we could get those questions to Eric beforehand, and he could put together a, a small presentation. Um, as you all know, we're, we are planning on doing our updates to the bylaws, um, and our regulations next year with an emphasis on climate adaptability, um, and co- cohesion across all of the, the, the regulations and best practices. So I think it's important that we bring water into this, of course, and we'll do that, uh, you know, in a bigger way, once we start the regulation upgrade, um, updates. But, right now, I think it's a good idea that for the board to start thinking about it, both boards, to start thinking about-
Make a friendly amendment to that to add that it would be very helpful, particularly for members of the board who may not have been here very long, I'm thinking of Mr. Anderson. Um, just for Water 101, how does water work in Wenham, where do we get it from? What are the restrictions on our drawdown, if we have any, you know? How, and then, um, how are we situated right now?
I would love, I would love to learn all that stuff, too.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know that, I know that we are, um, in the Ipswich River watershed, although we draw from wells, but I'm, that's about the extent of my knowledge of it, and I would, I would love to really understand it better, particularly if we're going to be considering sustainability changes to the zoning bylaws.
Absolutely.
That's my list, I don't know if others wanna chime in.
I, he may not have this information, well, obviously, I like to ask the question anyway, which is, I'm curious about um, the information that we have either as a town, as a region, or some other data set that talks about, um, how residential water use, what activities, um, drive different types of, uh, what percentage of, well, I'm not being very clear, what percentage of water use residential is driven by which activities? To the extent we have that data locally, that'd be awesome. Um, but he may not, so if he had other statistics available, that'd be interesting to me.
We could certainly ask that and see what data they do collect.
Hey, Margaret, I-
Go ahead, Peter.
Margaret, I thought something that, uh, you mentioned is just, as an, oh, by the way, the last session we had was that the Salem Water Board owns, uh, property along Wenham Lake.
Yeah, they own Wenham Lake and the property around it. Um, and they just had a property before the, um, who knows, before the Board of Selectmen?
Dearborn.
Yeah, the Dearborn Farm property. They wanted to buy that, they wanted to buy that, and we questioned what their rationale was for purchasing that. Um, and they, it, they said it's for the protection of their water supply. They own a lot of property, they're like, they own 30% of the land or something.
Yeah, they own the canal as well, and areas alongside it.
Yeah, everything along the Longham Reservoir, they own.
But there, but couldn't one surmise that, uh, you know, some of that property that they own around, um, Wenham Lake uh, could be residential and increase our tax base?
It is residential, and as a matter of fact, that Dearborn property that they're, that they're purchasing was slated for a house lot. It, it was slated, and so the, the town did discuss this, um, at the hearing. And I think what's, what came of it is the idea that the town needs to talk to them more about a pilot program, and what kind of money they're paying in taxes, 'cause once the Salem Beverly Water Board has it, you know, the, the tax rate goes down, I, I don't know how much they pay us, so. But they own quite a bit of land in town.
Crazy.
They also have very different restrictions about the, their use of the, of the water. Much less restrictive than we are, than we have to be.
Oh. Absolutely.
You go into, you go into Beverly and Salem, and, you know, there's lawns being sprinkled every place. I think, I think part of the presentation that it would be helpful to have, and whether it's, uh, our Water Commission that provides it, or whether it's the Ipswich River Watershed Association, which I noticed, Margaret, you also noted, you might try to connect with.
Yeah.
Is, is the details of, um, I believe there's a consent decree about, uh, cities and towns in the Ipswich River watershed assoc- uh, area um, that constrains our use, eh, eh, which does not include Beverly or Salem, so that's the extent of my knowledge, and I know only enough to be quite dangerous with it, so. It would be helpful to have that information, just to understand that a little better.
Certainly, yeah, we can have them come in and talk about that.
I have, uh, two more topics I'd be curious about, and then I'll stop, uh, spitballing and wasting your, your time, I'll just send you an email if I get more. One is, um, if they can't tell us what activities are driving residential use, they might have a sense for what activities, you know, obviously beyond landscaping or the so-called mandatory water ban, they would target in terms of, um, uh, activities that would help, um, reduce, uh, our aggregate water use residentially, but I guess suppose also commercially, though we don't have much of that, right?
No.
And the other piece is, what is their present understanding of our, um, carrying capacity for our water supply? Um, how many residents, how many people? How much developed land do they expect our water supply, either current or projected, can carry? Be honest, they could tell us what we have against that currently, if we've already exceeded that. But that would be of interest to me if they can somehow quantify that.
Okay.
And, you know, over what period of time that build out would need to occur, because it may be possible to develop new wellfields or something, but I'm not clear about whether or not there's a plan for that. Um, others, other thoughts? Alright, so Margaret, you'll take this back to them, and-
Yeah.
My Law, I, I don't know that it makes sense to have both sets of presented at the same meeting. So if we could get the Water Commission on in November, and then, um,
Ipswich?
Yeah, Erwa, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really exhausted. Erwa, um,
Yeah, December, you don't, you don't think it would be good to have them both? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just thinking, we're meeting in October, 'cause we still have, we have 60 Arbor, is there anything else? And Ms. Rogers has a question.
No, it isn't a question, it's a comment about, I know that the Ipswich River Watershed Association has given seminars and has been, has invited, uh, people appropriate to town, so in the last 10 years or so, I know that I've been to one of their really excellent seminars, and they talk about everything top to bottom of the Ipswich River. And so you could ask them if they, if they are planning any more of these seminars, because that would be something that would be great and wouldn't take up our, our time.
Okay.
But I think they're very reduced in, in personnel at this point.
Yeah.
So, maybe not.
And in water.
Well, in water, yeah.
If you go up to-
It didn't dry up, it didn't dry up this year.
If you go to Ipswich proper, and you go to where you can walk across the river,
Yeah.
the only water coming across that dam is for the fish, uh, ramps. That's it.
I know, it's dry.
Peter, you look like you're surrounded by water right now.
Yeah.
I wish I were, but I'm going there Sunday.
That mountain's not in Wenham either, I don't believe.
No, that, that would be Cadillac Mountain on Mount Desert Island.
Oh, nice.
Uh, okay, so, we can tell where your heart is, right now.
No, my heart is, my heart is turning around and watching Tom Brady play football.
No.
Well, we can't see, I see. Um, so, with that, if there are no other comments, I'm sure Margaret can take that, and move forward.
If you do think of anything else you'd like to get information on, just send me an email, and I'll, I'll share it with Eric, um, probably not till next Thursday.
Uh, what, uh, Virginia said about those seminars sound fascinating.
Sure, we'll check with, uh, you can go on their website, too, Ipswich River Watershed Association. Their website's pretty good.
Okay, so that brings us, I believe, to the minutes. Unless there are other matters that people want to put on the agenda for this evening?
I do have something I do need to talk to the board about that just came across my desk today.
Okay.
First, what do you think?
Why don't you tell us what you need to tell us, and then-
Okay. So, you're all familiar with Spring Hill. So, most recently, um, the Spring Hill subdivision, uh, they're required to have a fire access road from the top of Angus Circle that connects to Beverly's Thaxton Road. They asked us to go out and- They asked us to go out and look at it and determine where it should be. They, we did show it on a plan. They showed it on the original plan and the, the houses have been being built, and the house on Angus Circle was built, and it's a beautiful home, and it's got, you know, he put in lovely lawns. And then it was determined that the access road came right through his yard, pretty much. So we went up there and, you know, we took considerable time to go up Jeff Baxter, myself, some other people, and we, we walked through the property, and we walked over to the Beverly side, and we looked at the trees, and we said, oh, yeah, these trees are beautiful. Let's see if we can move this over. So we tried to accommodate them. So today, they were supposed to submit a new plan showing the, the new location of this access road. So they did submit a plan, but it was, it was a little bit odd. So when I, I asked the, um, the engineer to explain, you know, what that, what this weird little shape was for. I'm just going to share my, um, my screen. So anyway, then he told me that this is something that's now approved, was approved in last year and has been submitted for recording. They have, they're built, here's the end of Angus Circle. They got approval for this coming off of Thaxton Road in Beverly. I was so upset today when they. They being the developers for Spring Hill, Albert Ellis, Michael McNiff. There, we went out there and I was, I was like hugging trees practically. I said, oh, there's beautiful trees here. Let's not tear these down, you know? Let's see if we can accommodate your, your, your access road coming here, you know? So we thought maybe between, not so much on, on this lot 12th property, because it was so lovely. This was the original location apparently. And they had this under their, you know, under their hat the whole time. So they, they've actually gotten approval from Beverly to build three more house lots up here at the end of Angus Circle, not to connect.
Beverly never reached out to Wenham to say, just so you know, this is happening?
No, no, they never reached out and told us. We probably, we may have gotten a notice in the mail, but I get a bunch of those from all the different communities. Every time anybody does a special permit from any surrounding community, I get a notice, and I don't always read them all. But no, they never even mentioned it. And the developers never mentioned it.
Where's the access? Where's the connection?
Thaxton Road. See Thaxton Road?
Yeah, right, but where's the connection to Angus Circle?
It's not connecting to Angus Circle.
Okay.
The only way it's going to connect is with a fire access road. So they showed us a new access road that's like right about, I don't know if you can see my room, but right about here is what we thought they wanted to now do. And again, I, you know, in the big scheme of things, I guess it's not a huge deal for us. But I, I was like, just, I, I was just so upset that they never mentioned it to us, and that they let us go out there and, and made us believe that there was going to be this little dirt access road with all the trees will remain and, you know, it'll be a lovely area. I just, I don't know. I just wanted to share this with the board, because I know probably none of you were aware of this either, I would imagine.
So I wonder if the people who bought that, bought that beautiful place had knowledge that everything was going to get taken down in their backyard.
I don't know that they would. I, I don't know how they would. They might have. The engineer for Spring Hill said he didn't even know that this existed.
Can I ask a dumb question? Why does there need to be a connection between the, you know, the Wenham portion of Angus Circle and Thaxton Road?
This is, that is something that the fire department wanted. They wanted a fire access road so that in, in the event that Spring Hill Road should somehow be blocked, because it's not as wide as I think the fire trucks would like. If people were parked on either side of it, they might not be able to get up there if there's a fire. They wanted to have just one more means of access. So even if they had to go through Beverly to get through it. That was kind of, you know, adamant about it throughout the whole process. But I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, this has now been approved and without any of our knowledge.
You know that when we, when this came up, when this development first came up.
Yeah.
It was, you know, I, I was the biggest naysayer on this, because the obvious thing to do, instead of having all these cul-de-sacs, was to have a street out. And there was a right-of-way from the property out to, and when we discussed it with Beverly, they wouldn't even talk to us about it. Because they want any more traffic from, so they would allow us to connect, even though the property was, I think this was owned by them, was owned by this, the, the same people. Not allow us to have, to connect to Thaxton Road. So.
Yeah, I mean, we've been having some problems up here, to be honest with you, up at Spring Hill. You know, about the erosion control issues and conservation had a lot of issues back at the beginning of the year. They have tried to take care of those. Jeff Baxter's been mentioning to me that they've had some issues with the houses themselves. I think there was a small fire in this house. You know, some of their occupancy permits have, have not been issued yet, so. I just, I just wanted to let the board know this, and I, I was, I think I was irate today, and I sent a very scathing email to them. But just, just to let you know, this has happened. And I, I, again, I, I don't know that it's going to impact Wenham. Jeff Baxter is going to have to approve the fire access road. But I did tell the developers, I said, I, I don't want to deal with them anymore. If they want to make any changes to anything, they're going to have to come back to the planning board and actually show the changes that are to be made and ask for amendments. That was just me.
Thanks, Margaret. Sounds very.
And just one more thing, just to remind the board that next, I think it's I think it's next Tuesday is the warrant hearing for the town meeting warrant. Catherine, is it next Tuesday? Yeah. And the planning board is not obliged to attend, but if you do want to attend, it'll be via Zoom. It's on the website.
Our item, is that our item to them or?
Yes, yeah, we did. It's on the, it's on the warrant, the recodification of the regulations.
It's something that I need to do. I don't need to.
I'll, I'm also going to be there for a different reason, as Margaret knows, Ben, and Catherine. The, um, yeah, some of you guys may know about the citizens petition that we put forward. So that's, that's also on the warrant.
Yep.
But if anybody's interested, there have been a number of developments, and the Boards of Health in both towns have actually voted to repeal and restate their guidance to make it clear that it's not mandatory.
So can we move to the minutes? I can, because I was going to leave before the meeting, and since my hearing went so long, I didn't have a chance to. Hannah, I bet you.
You're muted again, Anne.
Anne, have you looked at these screens? This looks like Milo.
Did you ask if I've looked at them?
At the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at them quickly while I was recused on 60 Arbor.
Other people?
Yeah, I've looked at them. I have some, but I don't have them in front of me. So on page, on the first page, in the very last line, okay, good, it says, Attorney Cresser submitted draft language for a possible, yeah, no, 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 okay. Let me go down to the very last line in the page. Okay. An area or zoning.
What, what page do you want to look at, Virginia?
The first page. I had, I marked an edit on the first page, and it says last line, a last line of something. Oh, to remain in its present location. I don't know.
I think I know what you mean, Virginia. It's, it's where it says condition under Cresser.
Yeah.
Subject to the condition, and then it looks like there's a return that should, doesn't need to be there.
No, it wasn't it.
The existing shed. Yeah, you can bring that, that, the existing shed. There you go.
To remain in, that wasn't the one. So let us, we noted the buyer may, oh, and here we go. Noted that a buyer may or may not be interested in chen, this should be removed or moved within the air for the day. Oh, there it is. The date of, should say, instead of, and it should say from the date of.
Yeah, right here. Yeah.
Read that. There you go. Okay. So there's something on the next page, too, and it says about Mr. Cresser confirmed the hearing. It's, oh, it says something at the hearing, no, request that a copy of someplace. Confirm the application draft. Confirm the application is valid for variance, especially by a ruling citing the hammer light, but it was adopted years after. Don't know. Don't see it. Okay.
I have some Catherine, if you want me to go through them.
Sure, let, let him go through, and maybe I'll find the other two that I have.
So page one in the Continued Public Hearings, under 51 Cherry Street, one, two, three, fourth arrow down. That, let me see here. Where I'm, where it says I disclosed that I have worked, he has worked with, can you put and against?
With, yeah.
Yeah, and against Griffin, and it should be engineering.
Yep.
I just feel like "against" better, yeah.
I know. Typing's not my thing. No.
I've got that.
And I don't know if this is just because the other arrows, no, they don't. I don't know if you want to make it consistent that they're all indented like that, that the last two arrows are, you see what I mean? And in the next line.
Catherine can fix that.
Yeah, and the next line, where it says, it was confirmed that the two members not present at the August 13, 2020 meeting. I would say comma, and then put Mr. Clay and Mr. Pasquale.
Here?
After meeting, so. Which is, yeah, right. I'm pointing at my screen like you can see me.
I'm leaving my cursor around.
Just take out that section.
If you put Mr. Clay and Mr. Pasquale right there, and then a comma.
All right. And I know Catherine, you're going to do this, too.
Yeah, I am.
And then you can say, watched the recording and confirmed they signed the Mullins affidavits.
And confirmed? Okay.
Yeah, so.
Just skip that. Yep.
No, and then take out participate as voting members. There you go. Keep going. And I just say.
That all goes.
That they signed.
Yep.
And I can't remember, Margaret, if Mullins is an I or an E, but whatever, it doesn't really matter.
It's an I.
Is it?
Yeah.
Got it.
Uh, okay. So bottom of the page, number three. Relocation shed outside the setback area, comma, or zoning relief, I would say deemed necessary by the ZBA.
Does that word deemed?
Deemed necessary by the ZBA, and then I would go back and take out the "the" before deemed. Yep. Okay, next.
On page one, huh?
Yeah. Cresser noted, may not be, you may have just fixed this, initiated and referenced his, I think that should say suggestion that the shed be moved. And you fixed from the date of the recording. Yeah, that's fine. Down in the middle where it's italics, I don't know, it, it says, after planning board. And I don't know if you want to capitalize planning board whenever. It says "on" September 20, instead of "on."
Oh, yeah. Got it.
I had a question. You listed Anne and I as residents for the 60 Arbor. I guess technically we were there, so I guess that doesn't matter.
Can I go back up to the next line, Attorney Cresser, after the, the italics? It should say requested a copy of the draft decision, not on the draft decision.
Got it.
On page three, which says vote in italics, you said you'd be a Zoom instead of Zoom at the end.
Thank you.
And.
And, oh, capitalize weeks.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I saw, got that, too.
And then second article, again, it's just planning board with, if you want to capitalize it. And then for vote, I don't know if you want that vote with a colon. Sorry. If you go down to the second article one, yep.
Oh, where is planning board?
Right.
Just above there, two special.
And we're, the next line where it says vote. If you want. I don't know if you.
Yes.
You want a colon instead of semicolon, and you want italics, right?
Yep. Yes, I do. Thank you. Got it.
And there's more. This is, these are the longest minutes we've.
They are. They were awful.
On page four, under other matters, the third line, it says lake, comma, owned, it should say by the Salem.
Right.
There was one place it says the hearing was open, back on page three. And it says the hearing was opened for comments by the, oh.
Most weeks open the public hearing?
No, it had to do with when, opened it to comments from the public, or maybe, I don't see it.
Okay.
Back on page four, the last one I had was the board members asked Ms. Hoffman what the PB jurisdiction was related to water issues. I assume that means if condition permits.
Well, I think it means that is.
Oh, you wanted IE, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, IE, yeah.
I period, E period.
Yep.
That's it. That's all I have.
So question, are we still, Margaret, when we closed the meeting, we stopped recording, right?
Yes.
Okay, can we go up to the first page of this? Top?
No, you're still recording now.
We're, we're still recording, yeah.
Never mind.
Yep.
Peter, we have to vote on these, and then we have to vote to close the meeting.
So I just wanted to point out that we can talk about later. P. Clay is the planning board representative to the Community Preservation Committee. And we'll talk a little later about that. I can't remember who I replaced.
Dawn.
Dawn.
Probably have a conversation while the meeting is open.
I just thought it was interesting from a decorum standpoint, a lot of very angry people on that committee. Or, yeah, it was, I've never seen anything like it, frankly.
You will be the voice of reason. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So if you want to.
Want to have a.
Meeting. Sorry, Anne, this is a really minor thing, but we have the first three of us listed with initials, and then. we have the first three of us listed with initials and then Peter and David's name. So I don't know if we wanna do it all or not.
I think that's more important.
Well, yeah.
Of course.
It's the P. And that, oh, I was gonna say.
Do you wanna do it this way?
Either way.
Sometimes I've just tried to save space.
Sure.
Right. And we should all be.
Exactly. I changed that.
Okay. Um, do you wanna capitalize town clerk right here?
Sure.
Just looking for caps, right? This is fun.
Boy. Quite as good as getting a little after dinner drink or getting some dinner and then a little after dinner drink.
Really good, actually. All right. Are we, are there any other amendments to these minutes? I can see memo from M. Hoffman to planning board, no capital B, at fifty-one Cherry Street.
Got it.
The second arrow.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Can I ask for a motion?
I move that we accept the, um, the minutes as edited.
Second that.
Peter Clay's second set.
Uh, Weeks votes Aye. Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Aye.
Clay?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Um, now I would have a motion to close the meeting, please.
So moved.
Nine forty-seven, yes.
Okay, I'll second it. Favor. Week says Aye. Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Pascarello?
Aye.
Clay?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, all.